adaptive curling. This was a new experience for many of our students. They worked as teams to push the stones closest to the bull's eye. Shout out to the Wawa Tosa Curling Club for offering this free activity to students and adults with disabilities. A hardworking day on the ice was followed by lunch at Culvers, when they practiced restaurant etiquette and ordering for themselves. And I'm going to pass it along to the students, and then I have a recommendation for reordering the agenda.
Hi. Our Snowball Spirit Week starts tomorrow with Pajama Day, and then it's going to follow all our fun spirit days. And then the dance itself is going to be held this Saturday in our NPR from 7:30 to 9:30. And then, or do you want?
Yes, and Greendale High School's acapella group Gee Harmony will be performing at AC and the OC on February 2nd. Prepare for their inaugural performance in the quarterfinals International Championship of High School Acapella, which will take place on February 9th. And then also, on Friday, April 12th in Madison, Wisconsin, some Greendale Sources of Strength members will be heading to a conference. That's going to be the first in-person Mental Wellness Student Leadership Summit.
And then set is meeting this week on Wednesday utilizing our flex time, and we're going to be planning out like the rest of the year, and then hopefully how we can start off on the right foot on the next school year. And that's all we have.
Great. Thank you both for that update.
And then I would recommend, given the guests that we have presenting to the board this evening, that following comments or questions from visitors, that the board reorder the agenda to take Action Item 4.2, followed by Information Item 5.3, and then Information Item 5.1 before following the agenda in order.
I'll make a motion to reorder the agenda, then immediately after public comments, we take Agenda Item 4.2, follow that with Agenda Item 5.2, then 5.1, and then return to the regular order of the agenda.
Five, 5.3 should be the second, and 5.1 would be third.
Oh wait, so 4.2, 5.3?
And then 5.1.
5.3 and then 5.1.
Okay. I'll amend my motion on the spot.
I'll say.
So we have a motion and a second to reorder the agenda. Any discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion carries. So we are on to citizen comments. I have a little statement I read before each meeting. Welcome to all those who will be speaking this evening. We would like to remind you that the school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of the district. They are official business meetings held in public. Through School Board Bylaw 0167.3, the board allows citizens to make comments by scheduling two opportunities on the agenda to receive citizen comments. In accordance with the intent of open meetings law, please be aware, although the Board of Education welcomes comments from the public, it cannot discuss or debate items brought up during public comments. In order to hear from all citizens who wish to speak, and to ensure that the official business of the district is addressed, board policy does set a time limit for citizen comments. We will be adhering to that board bylaw and its time limits at tonight's meeting. Persons wishing to address the board are asked to come to the podium and state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to only one time. Individuals who will be speaking will be limited to three minutes. Citizen comments are limited to a period not to exceed 30 minutes, and we have this twice in our agenda. So, does anyone wish to speak tonight? Come on up. Good evening. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. Hold on one second. Is the mic on? One moment. We're live streaming. Okay, thank you.
Carla Correll, 5379 Eastway, Apartment 4, in Greendale. On Friday, this past Friday, my daughter attends Greendale Middle School, and she was set up and brutally attacked by a boy. And I just want more than what he, the five-day suspension that he's getting, and more to be done about the social media posts that are going around. There's a video circulating about this attack on my daughter. There is battery charges on this boy currently. And I just want more to be done to not only protect my daughter, but to protect these students. The school was fully aware that there was a problem with my daughter two weeks prior to this incident, and I was never notified until I came home from work and my daughter informed me that she was brutally attacked. We went to urgent care. She has a concussion, and she had to be pulled from cheer because she may suffer a brain bleed if she gets hit in the head again. And I just want more to be done than what's being done now.
Thank you, and I'm very sorry to hear about that. We, as a district, take student safety very seriously, and Dr. Mizik and the administration team is following up. Thank you. Is there any other speaker tonight?
Good evening. Corinne Damato, 7008 Dobson Court. I know I sent you guys an email, so pretty much kind of going off of that on the same subject. You know, I know with some of you guys have kids in the school, and she was just walking out of school, and all of a sudden this guy comes behind her, grabs her and slams her to the ground, punches her in the face. She couldn't even defend herself. Now, I ask myself, would I want that to happen to my daughter? Absolutely not. And I really want to make sure that there is something that is done, because this is not okay behavior. If nothing is published or done about this, you are saying that it is okay for this to happen again. We don't want that to happen to anybody. And I know that maybe some things were said that weren't nice ahead of time or whatnot. I don't know the details. But what I do know that it wasn't okay for anybody to be treated that way and attacked when you're supposed to be safe at school. Safe at school. And it was a grade under her, just came up, slammed her to the ground, started punching her in the face. That's horrible, disgraceful. So I just want to ask that action is done, and it is looked upon maybe at our policy, that we have zero tolerance for this type of behavior, because this should not be allowed at any behavior at any way, anywhere at Greendale, because all you're doing is lowering the bar and the standards for the school district. It is not going to be safe, and the kids and families are going to leave, and we will not be that destination school district anymore. This isn't something that should be shoved under the rug. So it needs to be reevaluated and checked, and make sure that is as well known to all of the students, to let them know that either it's not okay to come up and attack people, it is not okay to video-record it, and it's not okay to laugh about it. What's the protocol, and where's the support for these kids, instead of just doing it on the Stop It app, where they don't feel that it's really doing anything? So we need to reevaluate that to keep these kids safe, and to raise that bar at Greendale, and continue on the education. Don't lower the bar for these kids. They deserve way much better, and it is amazing school. We don't want to go down. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, and if you could state your name and
Laura Schilling, 7205 Earl. I'm cheer mom for the eighth graders. Our cheer team celebrated I-Cheer, and this is what we were feeling. As a district, I want more. My son's in the band. He's in the musical. He's going to be playing a role. That might be a target of some words. I want zero tolerance for violence. Words, one thing. Maybe there's a better way to monitor that, I don't know. But violence, that that happened behind her back, pulled her down. If anybody else has seen the video, which I know some of you have, would you allow that at your school with your child there? Zero tolerance for the violence, please. And to cheer for our schools, like we do as a cheer group? It's embarrassing that there was no response. I was waiting all day to see some message about it, some like, we don't tolerate this. I saw nothing, and I was heartbroken about it. For her, and her daughter, and all the girls, and all the boys, anybody that would be a subject to this. It shouldn't happen, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? We will have a second opportunity, the second half of the meeting. So seeing none, we did reorder our agenda, so we're going to move to Item 4.2, which is the approval of the 6603 agreement and Perkins Grant. And we have Mr. Tom Herman here tonight. Welcome.
Thanks as always for having me. I really appreciate it. I can't say enough how much I absolutely love my job. The chance that I have because of you guys hiring me, as well as the four other districts, really gives me an opportunity to get students out there and do experiential learning. That is really our mission. We are together as a consortium because we want our students to have experiences. Some of the things that we have done, probably our crown jewel thing that we've done most recently is we built our CNA lab. That is at Greenfield High School. That is going to service all five of our schools. In this particular school, Greendale High School, we have a very strong healthcare pathway. We have several students that aspire to be doctors, nurses, and other healthcare professionals. And you have to have your CNA in order to get in, okay? It's sort of like the point of entry. It's the launch, a launch pad. Right now, as we speak, Mr. Minch and I have 30 students that would like to get their CNA, starting in summer, fall, and spring, so summer of '24, then the '24-'25 school year. And we're able to do that. You know, it's right down the way. It's easy, it's accessible, and that was our goal, equity and access. We've already done our summer trades camp. We've done that. It's a full immersion week, where our students get to actually do hands-on stuff for 13 different trades. In this school, we have career panels, where we have experts that come from industry that come in. We have the data on our students. We know exactly what they want to do, if they want to be in, let's just say, they want to be in the trades. We have trades experts come in. If they want to be in business, we have business people come in. And they can ask them questions that are really specific. It's stuff that they don't necessarily know, and stuff that we can't necessarily give them out of a book, per se. Youth apprenticeships, this year we have 17 students that are youth apprentices. It's an absolutely shattered our highest number in school record. Just to give you some frame of reference, we had five last year. The year before, we had four. They are in healthcare, marketing. You see Ayana LaPointe, one of our 2024 grads. We have a student that's actually a future educator. I can't say enough. I'm like, God, I hope you stay in education, because not only do we need you, but you'd be really, really good at it. We have one in construction. We have a couple in vet science. We have one in logistics, something that, you know, most students, I don't even know what the word is. And then, based on the efforts of Mr. Jonas and myself, hopefully we'll have computer science coming in '24-'25. We take students out on field trips. We do business simulations. One of the upcoming field trips is we're going to take 10 students, you know, pretty much are really, really mature kids that know they want to be in healthcare. They're going to take, so it'll be 10 from each of our schools, be 50 total students. We get to take a tour of St. Luke South Shore and interact with 11 different departments of people. So not only do they find out, okay, yeah, we'll talk to a doctor, we'll talk to a nurse, we'll talk to a lot of other people that you wouldn't normally engage with in a hospital setting. And so I really, really am looking forward to that. Of course, we always bring in guest speakers, and we definitely lean on, we have 180 business partners now. We lean on them all the time, whether it's just, hey, can you call, you know, talk to this kid about this type of job? You know, maybe it's because he's an entrepreneur, aspiring entrepreneur, or talk to this young lady. She's thinking about going into this in college. And just having those conversations, a 15-minute conversation is something that students can really, 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 really learn from. On the backside, you see some extra pictures. On the bottom right, we had a field trip for aspiring manufacturing students. We took 20 students over to MATC. They got to interact with the faculty. They got to interact with instructors, and then they actually got to go out to a local business. And that was actually sponsored by the band Metallica.
I love it.
Rock on. All of these experiences, whether it's our hiring event, we have a trades hiring event, that's just a massive amount of people. That's 500 students, and their parents are invited, you know, to interact with 75 of our business partners in the trades. If it's an interview, if it's a job shadow, if it's talking to a guest speaker, if it's interviewing a guest panelist, if it's going on a field trip, all of those experiences lead to these things, okay? Number one, it's working on their communication skills. If there is one thing that our students, and I'm talking about all of our students, they absolutely have got to be better at, and that is communication skills. That is our number one thing. If we asked all of our 180 partners, what's the number one skill, they would say they have to learn how to speak. So they do that. They have opportunity to work on that. Obviously, their tech skills go up. They learn how to network. They're starting to discover about their careers. Some of them get industry-recognized certifications. And probably the most important thing is that they gain confidence. We want our students to graduate from here. You know, if you go off to Madison, there's 50,000 students. You have to be able to advocate for yourself. You have to be the one that's independent enough to do the things that you need for yourself. Of course, that's all on top of making some money, getting high school credit, maybe having some better opportunities for college admission and scholarships, earning some volunteer hours, and building up a resume. I'm just going to finish in closing, kind of what's next, what's in the offing. Obviously, we're going to continue to do what we're going to do, what we have in the past. As I mentioned, I'd like to get some computer YAs with Mr. Jonas. I had a conversation with him today about doing that. It would basically be a help desk-type situation where students, where our schools would bring, like, broken screens on their Chromebooks. Let's have our students fix them here, okay? It's a reduced cost for the school district. It's an opportunity for a student that likes to tinker, get a chance to do that. Katie Keast, I don't know if you know her. She's with our transition students. What a ball of fire. Holy cow. She's like another second coming of Maggie Olson over there. I like to work with her a little bit more closely in terms of getting our transition students in front of some of our employers, especially because they, you know, we want to, we want to take care of every kid. That's really what it's all about. So, in closing, if you have any questions, fire away. Otherwise, I really, really thank you for allowing us to do this. And by working together, we're all better together. All five school districts are better because of it.
Outstanding. Well, first of all, Tom, I want to thank you for your excitement as well. I think you're right up there with Maggie and your excitement for the students of not only Greendale, but we have five districts that you're working with, but obviously we focus on our students here. I just want to thank you for your continuous work in this area. You are making a difference in the lives of the futures of many of our students from Greendale. So thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Tom Herman tonight?
I do. Maybe you said this. I was reading some stuff while you were talking, but I see here it says, bring your resume. Does anybody help these kids construct their resume because, or cover letters? Because those can be tricky, obviously.
Yeah. So for, for anybody that I come into contact with from our five schools, I basically tell them, you need to bring a resume, okay? And I will work with them. I actually have a standard, sort of like a simple template that they can fill in, and then the person, the student and I kind of polish it up. And then we take it to the guidance counselor. Here, burn off 50 of these things. Okay, I want you to show up with a stack of resumes when you're engaging with these employers. Do they really need it? Not necessarily, but quite honestly, I just want our students to separate themselves from the other 450 kids there, or whatever else is there, you know? I even help students, this is funny, I even help students, you know, a kid from Pewaki called me. He's like, can you help me on my resume? I'm like, sure, fine, whatever. That's right. That's great. I think it's also something that in high school, students need to have before they leave, for two reasons. One is, you forget what you've done in high school, and it's a great record to have. You put it in a Google Doc, and you can have it. You can always build on it. You can change the format and whatever, but the content's always there. The second thing is, if it's really got a lot of white space on it, that means you need to take it up a notch, okay? Maybe you need to join an extra club. Maybe you need to go back to that sport or pick up that instrument. You need to be doing something else, okay? You got to have a full resume, okay? Maybe you're not taking advantage of what we have here. And it's just a gentle reminder for them. But definitely, any student that I come into contact with, we have resumes.
And then, do you guys do any, like, mock interviews?
I ask the kids that. Some, I would say, most of the kids have already had interviews because they already have jobs. You know, they're generally juniors and seniors. Put it this way, if it's a meek and mousy student, I more or less say, this is when we're going to get together and do this, okay? They can always not show up, or whatever, but I offer it to them, you know? And, you know, I'll even ask another teacher to help me too, because if they do it once, that's great, but if they do it twice, it's even better. Because after we do it, then we can have a little talk back and say, you nailed it here, here, and here. The next time you do this, and you're going to be better the next time, okay? In order to be better, I want you to, you know, kind of do these items, okay? Again, it's a confidence thing, okay? We want students to be engaged at our hiring events as, you know, as the premier candidates. So showing up with a resume, you know, shows that employer some initiative. You've actually taken some initiative. It also shows a level of professionalism that not all high school students have.
Great question. Anyone else?
Do you, Tom, do you need approval on the Perkins grant application, or will that be coming forward at a later date?
That hasn't been posted out yet. It'll come out in March, and then we'll do it in April.
Great.
I guess, you know, I just like to say thank you. You know, I think, we talk about college and career readiness, and sometimes the adults focus on the college part. But I think you're here to remind us, and I think of the board, it's always a good refresher to say, you know, there are some great opportunities. There are some internships, apprenticeships, trades, that, you know, there are some very viable, very, you know, very nice opportunities. So thank you for that. I think the 6603 agreement regarding the Perkins funding, you know, that's sometimes some educational speak, but I think what's important that the community should hear is that this is an opportunity for us to partner with other school districts in surrounding areas. You know, we can't all have a welding class. We can't all have a CNA class because of budgetary constraints. But when we pool our resources together, when we work with someone of your caliber, you know, it's, it's a way to provide that to the students at Greendale, as well as in the area. So thank you for all that.
I was going to ask our student board members. I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have any thoughts on this? Any questions or any experiences?
Yeah, I actually had a couple. I think, because I've also been trying to work on a resume, but it's just one of those things, like, where if, and like other students I know too, if there's like an easy way, like a reason to not do it, people won't do it, like if it's an easy, like, stopping thing. And I think something we should work on, like, to do in our advisory is, like, let all students, like, have access to that template and give them time to put that resume in. But then also, like, if it needs to be tweaked, so like, if we're giving, like, every student to the freshman, they're hopefully going to obtain more things. And so if we can also have one that's, like, easier to add to. I know we have, like, a Google Doc running that, like, we've listed all the activities we've done, which is, like, a good thing to have, because, like, that's someplace to start when you're building a resume, but then the actual thing of, like, building a resume, I think it would be very beneficial if we included that in one of our advisory plans before the end of the year at some point.
That's a good idea. Thanks, Kay.
Great point. And Nick?
Yeah, I just want to say that I absolutely agree with what Kay says. Mr. Herman does a wonderful job always. He gives a presentation, just a couple months ago he didn't, and he really makes it clear that he has something for everyone, which is really true. I know people that have reached out, and even if they don't really have built a resume, he's able to find something, which is super helpful. So I want to thank you for all your work, obviously.
Kay, and is there any Zello?
Kaya, and is there any Zello? Do you do any work with Zello?
I know they do have something in there that you can, they like build your resume for you, but I only know that because I specifically asked about it to my guidance counselor. So, I, like, students don't know that. And I also don't think, like after, like, I haven't gone on that at all this year because we've done all the matchmaking and career and like all that stuff, being like sophomore, junior year, start freshman year, obviously. Because now hopefully we're all like being guided towards like, okay, you have your decision or things to narrow it down to, what's next for you, instead of doing that beginning steps. So, that's like a good place to start and like include it for the underclassmen especially, like one of their things they have to do when they do the matchmaker and like all the career stuff.
There should be, I'm just thinking, linking between your program and the academic career planning software that's already in place.
I'm sure there's a difference, or I mean, maybe, I don't know if you got it from there or something, but I know there is, something exists in that realm and that website. But I think if you especially have already worked with students on the resume you have, and it's been good, like, we could just use that one.
That's a good idea.
Great point, Kaya. Dr. Mizik, were you going to say anything? Okay. All right. Anyone else tonight? I again want to thank you, Tom, for all you do. I did have to ask a question. Did your patients survive in this little scenario?
Yes, no, no students or patients were harmed in the making of this picture.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do, and have a great week. All right, we are moving on to item 5.3, which we have another guest tonight. Our consultant, Cheryl Stinski, is here from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, which is known as W A S B. And I want to thank her for coming tonight. What we'll be doing as a board, each year, we annually take the opportunity to do an evaluation on our performance and how we think we're doing as a board. And Cheryl is here tonight to help facilitate us in that process. We've had a chance to do the survey and also get the results. So, I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl, and thank you. You had a very long drive. Where are you coming from again?
Sherwood, not Shorewood, Sherwood.
Sherwood, and that's about two hours, right, north of us?
About an hour and three quarters.
Okay. So, thank you for being with us tonight.
Great. Thank you for inviting me. I'm just going to set my timer, because I know me. And I know I have an amount of time, and I don't want to go over, so I just want to get this timer set. Okay. Do I, do you advance my slides? Okay, great. Thank you. If you want to go to the next slide, that would be great. This is just a welcome from me, and thank you again for inviting me to be here tonight. This tool is one of my favorite things because I think it's so helpful to boards. So, I appreciate the fact that you're taking the time to do this tonight. If you'd go to the next slide. So, this is what we're going to do tonight. First, we're going to review strengths and opportunities from your reports very briefly, highlight some common themes, some needs that you may have, some areas for continuous improvement, and then look at maybe a focus area or two for you to work on for the next year until you take your next survey. So, if you would advance it again. So, I want to start this with you remembering that surveys and evaluations aren't designed to define us, but to refine us. This comes from crucial learning, and I think it's really important to think about that. Sometimes people are afraid to take surveys, and I know that's not this group, but they think that it's going to show their warts, so to speak. And let's face it, there are warts. We all have them. But it's a good idea to look at, first of all, what we can celebrate, and then what we need to do to refine us to become an even better board. Next slide. So, the first thing I want to do is to celebrate. And you had some areas on your tool, your survey results, that were either fully or mostly achieved across the board, which is highly unusual. And I know that we didn't have a comparison to the state results, but I can tell you from other districts that I've worked with that in these areas, you would have beat out the state results without a doubt. And so, the areas are your vision, your policy, and your planning. All came through where you all either said that we have fully achieved this, or we've mostly achieved this. And there were no questions about that from anybody. So, I think that's something great to applaud. Next slide. And then, this is, these are areas to celebrate as well. They weren't quite as high a marks, but they were, again, fully or mostly achieved. And there were just one or two responses to one or two questions that said partially achieved. But for the most part, everybody agreed that they were fully or mostly achieved. That were your district operations, your data-driven decision-making, community engagement, and budgeting. So, if you look at this, it's almost all of the areas of your survey that you agree together as a board that you've fully achieved or mostly achieved those areas, the questions that were asked in there, which you all took the survey, so you know what those questions were. And that is something really to celebrate. Because I can tell you again, those are higher marks than the state averages. So, you guys are doing a great job in those areas, and it's time to pat yourselves on the back a little bit. Then we go to the next slide. And you had two areas that needed some attention. And based on last year's survey, which unfortunately, I didn't get the actual numbers from to put in my slide presentation, but I can tell you that these did not go up from last year, but for the most part, they went down from last year, which tells me that they need some more attention. And that was a couple of parts of board operation and a couple of parts of culture. So, I want to be clear, it's not all about board operations and all about culture, but there were a couple of areas in each of those that I think would be, who have you, to pay some attention to. Next slide. So, in the slides to come, you'll notice that there's a green highlighted area, and that's where there was general alignment of the board. So, those areas, again, you were in agreement for the most part that they were fully or mostly achieved. And then there's a yellow highlighted area, and that's what I believe shows where improvement is needed or clarification is needed. And the important part of that is sometimes it is clarification, because if just one person sees it differently, for example, if one person says it's not even started, and four people on the board say it's mostly achieved, typically, that's a clarification problem. Is that either people are new on the board, or they don't understand what everybody else understood to be what the question was asking about. I did not see any of those in the yellow highlighted area, so just know that, that we're looking at areas that likely are needing some improvement. Next slide. So, in board operations, these were ones that you're doing very well at. I prepare for board meetings. In fact, the interesting part to me was that everyone said this is fully achieved. I prepare for board meetings.
I concur.
However, not everybody said that people come prepared to do board work. And so, that's interesting to me, because if you, if across the board, you were all saying, "I prepared for board, I prepare for board meetings", then what you're saying is not everybody else does. But you all believe you do. And so, there's where the difference comes in, and may need some self-reflection, more than conversation among each other. Although, there might be room for conversation there too, if, for example, you have a difference of opinion about what it means coming prepared to do board business. Because for some people, that may mean, "I can just do a consent agenda. I don't have any questions to ask." For others, it might mean, "It's okay to ask questions." They might have come up between the time I talked to somebody ahead of time to clarify things and the night of the board meeting. So, it might need some conversation there, but I'm worried less about that than some of the other things.
Cheryl, if I could maybe interject too. There could be a perception, just because prior to board meetings, all of us have a one-on-one conversation with the superintendent, and some may get more clarification than others during that time. So, I think that could be part of the discrepancy.
It could be. And certainly, it could be because other questions come up. I worked with a board not long ago where one of the board members was fairly new. And she's the kind of person that really studies and looks at things and thinks about them. And so, they would, something would come up on the board agenda, and they'd want to vote on it, and she'd feel somewhat pressured to vote on it, and so she would. And then she'd want to put it back on the agenda, because she hadn't thought it through. So, sometimes it can be situations like that as well. But everybody believes that they prepare well for board meetings. You evaluate the superintendent at least annually against clear goals and with performance criteria that include measures of student achievement. You had a 3.8, which means that everybody but one person said that's fully achieved. And that difference between fully achieved and mostly achieved, for many people, is not great. So, that isn't, I mean, that's something to celebrate. Our board committees are used effectively. That's a 3.4 average, which, this is out of four. So, keep in mind what four means. And so, I think, again, that was mostly or all achieved on that one. And then the final one, which also has a 3.4, if we have a good understanding of open meetings law and know how to navigate open sessions, closed sessions, and special situations such as hearings. Again, a 3.4, which is a mix between fully achieved and almost fully achieved. So, keep that in mind. So, I think these, again, are things to celebrate. There's where you're doing well with. So, let's go to the next slide. Then, in board operations, these are areas that maybe need some attention. Our board meetings are effective and efficient, was a 2.2. So, there were more than one person in that response said that it's only partially achieved. And so, it may be worth some conversation to look at how, you know, what is it that makes people think that they're not efficient and effective? And not necessarily is that saying they are not, but that's what the perception is of some of the people, is that they could be more efficient and effective. We honor our decisions outside of the board meetings, had a 2.4, which, again, is pretty low, and it is lower than it was last time. And so, there's a concern about that, which I plan to spend a little bit of time on that tonight. And then we encourage constructive and professional discussions at board meetings, had a 2.4, which, again, tells me that there needs to probably be some work about that, especially since I know you did board norms last summer. So, it's important to keep that in mind. And then the last one, board members speak on behalf of the board district, board or district only when authorized and clearly identify when they are commenting strictly as an individual. And this is something that I can tell you many boards are struggling with these days. Because of social media in part, because of board members feeling like they're taking off that board hat, and yet, everybody else sees them with the board hat on. I talked to someone at convention last week from another district who said that when he goes out to do any kind of a presentation to someone, they list him as a board member. Even if it has nothing to do with his board work, they list him as a board member from that school district. And so, for him, he's saying, "How do I get beyond that, where people then don't think I'm speaking for the district?" So, I've got something that I think, hopefully, we can spend a little time on with that tonight. Then if we go to the next slide and look at culture, lots of good things in culture. We recognize students, teacher, and schools for outstanding performance. And I saw some of that recognition even tonight with the man who came before me. That's a 3.8, which means almost everybody said fully achieved. We focus on strategic decisions and policy issues rather than on the administrative implementation of policy and day-to-day management operation issues, 3.6. In short, that means you're letting the superintendent do her job and not trying to micromanage her. Our culture promotes high expectations, 3.6, again, almost all fully achieved. We work with the superintendent in a spirit of mutual respect, open communication, trust, and confidence. Again, mostly or almost all achieved. And then finally, our committee believes that the district is effectively governed and makes decisions with the best interests of students in mind. That was a 3, which probably is about the state average. And so, I think that may be something you want to look at. I don't think it's your most important thing to look at right now, but I think it's something you might want to have some conversation about eventually. If you'd go to the next slide, please? These are the two areas of culture that I think need some addressing. And if you think back to what we talked about with board operations, it's in the same place. It's the same kind of thing. Our board models mutual respect and professional behavior, got a 2. And remember, this is a 2 from you. So, basically, there were people that were saying that it was not even partially achieved. It was barely started. And then, we value differences of opinion and do not let them degenerate into personality conflicts, another 2. And so, again, I think those, they all go together. The ones that you were low in, in board operations, and the ones that you have challenges with in culture, I think, fit together. It's what's happening here that that was a response to. Not what you're doing in your board roles with the district, not what you're doing, for the most part, going out, although there was a little concern about making sure of that. It's really what's happening at the board table. And the good news about that is you get to do something about that, and you can. To me, that's the part where, in some ways, it's the easiest, because it's all up to you, how that works. So, any questions about that before we move on to the next slide, about any of that?
I will just comment, the community engagement was, in our last cycle, was an area that we scored much lower in. And so, that was something, here was a celebration tonight. So, it is nice to see that some of these areas we've been discussing, we're working on.
Absolutely. And I think, I didn't get all of that comparison, but I'm guessing that because the scores were so high, that I think, you know, either you've been doing a good job all the way through, or the improvement, continuous improvement you're working on is working. So, I think that's great. And I want to just kind of premise this with, this is not unusual in boards today. We are noticing, and this probably started in COVID, when there was a lot of concern about what was going on and how things were being handled, that this has become an area for many boards that is becoming to be challenged. And I think there's a lot of factors involved in that that you're well aware of. Some are politics, some are what's going on, you know, in the world around us. Some are things we heard about earlier, that the world is a different place than it was five years ago. We all know that. And so, I think it takes extra effort and extra focus to make these things work really well, just because of what you're up against. So, if you'd go to the next slide. Any other areas on this survey that you can think about where there was alignment of board opinion, or areas where more conversation is needed, other than the ones I mentioned? Something that either you saw in the results, or that you were hoping would be a focus?
I think you mentioned honoring our decisions. Was that one that you already talked about, an area to focus on?
Yes, it is. Yep. Okay, then I'm going to move on to the next slide. And I'm going to ask you to do some discussion, but I passed out board policy. Because what I did is I gathered things that should help you with this. And one of them is your board policy. And I don't know what I did with my copy of it. Just hang on a second here. Here we go. And what I, I'm going to ask you to look at in your board policy is, on the first page, first of all, the first part of that, the introduction, talks about how the board functions most effectively. So, I may ask you to look at that. And then D, G, and K are the ones that I pulled out that I think are most helpful for you, that have to deal with these things that I say, or things that I hope you can work on. And then, so that's D, G, and K, and the introduction. Maybe I'll give you a minute to just kind of look that over. And then the next thing that I passed out is the board norms that you created last summer. Now, this may not look just like your document. Kathy sent it to me in an email, and I just put it together in a Word doc. Kathy sent it to me in an email, and I just put it together on, in a Word document. So the one you've created may look a little bit different than this, but I wanted to make sure it was in a form that made some sense. So these were the, the board norms that you put together last summer. And I would expect that you're working on them. That's what board norms are, are there for. We don't just create them and all of a sudden we become great at this. It's something that, it's a working document. And what I think may be helpful for a part of our discussion tonight, and we have about 12 minutes left, is to talk about two things. One, what can you do in order, one thing that you think you can do that would improve the, those things that we, that I said you need to work on? So what's one thing that you can do to improve how the, how the culture is at your board meetings or how you operate at your board meetings? And what's one thing that you think may need some discussion about what, what the board can do itself if board norms aren't working? So for example, if you're in a meeting and the first board, board norm is respect differences of opinion and use these differences to problem solve and create solutions. If you think that one or more people are not respecting differences, what do you do in that meeting as a board? And, and this may sound silly, but I know that there are boards that actually have props. And so if they think that something is being violated along the board norms, that's causing a problem, not just because, oh, someone's just been, you know, said something that someone else didn't like, but I'm talking about something that's causing a problem where you either see tension is being raised, conflict is coming up, or people are shutting down, one or the other, then what can you do as board members to change that? Either call for a break or, like I said, some boards have props where they actually have like something they'll all hold up or whoever sees that will hold it up so that their, whoever is doing that gets the message. And again, not to be like a shaming kind of thing, but rather just to, you know, kind of like, hey, we're starting to cross the lines here. What can we do differently? If that's the norm you want, then you've got to have a way to help each other with that. So it's there, you know, when I talk about using props or whatever, it's meant to be an aid, not to be a slap. Okay? So that this is something you agreed upon together, how do we do this together? So if you go to the next slide, please. One way to do that is to think about a leadership goal for all of you. And that would be something you're going to work on over the next year, that leadership goal. So this is just kind of a way to put it together. As a board, we will strive to fulfill our roles as leaders and champions of public education and educating all school students in the Greendale School District by improving our ability to govern with excellence through whatever those goals might be. So that would be a, one way to do it is to actually create some goals around it. And then if you go to the next slide. There's, you can, this is just a format for you to look at, but, and, and I will make sure that you get this PowerPoint. It's just a way to put it in a format if you choose to do that. So you don't really need to look at that right now. And then the, the next slide, please. I need you to go one more slide. I guess not. I must have missed putting a slide in there. But I'm going to go back to what I said before then. What I'd like you to do is think about one thing that you can do as a board member to help improve either your culture or your board operations, looking at what those things were that were, and maybe we go back to those slides. So if you could go back to, keep going. One more, one more. There we go. Our board, that one, our board models mutual respect and professional behavior. We value differences of, of opinion and do not let them degenerate into personality conflicts. So those are the two with culture. And if you'd go back now, one more, I think, no, two, there you go. Our board meetings are effective and efficient. We honor our decisions outside of the board meetings. We encourage constructive and professional discussions at board meetings. And board members speak on behalf of the board district only when authorized and clearly identify when they are commenting strictly as an individual. In your pack or the things I passed around is also a little cheat sheet, sample responses. And we've used this in trainings before. The last one there, what do I do when I vote no and the board still approves a vote is some, something that was taken out of the Governance Core. And there's actually a quote on there from a board member that was put in that book that what, what he says, and I thought it made great sense, what he says when someone says, hey, how could you have voted on that or voted no and now you're supporting it? That's confusing to people. That's your job, right? That is what you say you're going to do, and it's really what you're required to do. So I'm not going to put anybody on the spot, but I am going to put you on the spot. So I'm, what I mean by that is I'm not going to make you respond to me, but I'm going to ask you to. So if you look at those six things that I said need some work, can you think of one thing that you might be able to do for the next board meeting that might help to improve that culture or the board operations? And again, I'm just going to ask, I'm not going to go around and make you say anything. And maybe even our student reps could have a little voice in this section about one thing that you think you could do. So. Anybody have something to offer?
Well, I, I would, I can offer just, I think, a summary of, there's, you know, there's two board members who, who've been on the board longer than the rest of us. And the board that they served on had very little discussion or debate. And then I brought a lot of discussion and debate to the table. And then we also have two newer board members. So when you have a mix like that, I'm glad you highlighted D, G, and R in our policy because I think that is something that, you know, obviously you have discussion and debate, then along with that needs to come some respect for different opinions. And, and, and I think that's what this board has struggled with, in my opinion.
And so is there one thing you think you can do to add to, to, to improve in that situation?
Well, I'm usually the person people are mad at for bringing up different opinions. So I don't, you know, I'm usually the one who's voting no or asking more questions. So I'm, I'm guessing they would prefer that I don't ask questions or I don't raise different. But I, I feel that we represent a wide variety of, of constituents. And if you go out into the community, there's all kinds of different debates going on. And so.
And your board policy actually says that you want that, right? In some ways. So I guess I'm not looking at it that way so much as I am at, okay, we all, we all have a part to play in all of this. So is there something that you can think of? And I'm not saying because you're at fault. I'm just saying, is there something that you're, you can think of that you can do that might be just a little bit different way of doing things that might help the situation? You ask questions, you bring things to the board that may not be raised because you see, you have a different perspective. And I think what you said is, I, I'm not sure that the board appreciates that. And so maybe part of what you can do is find out. Is it that they don't appreciate that you bring different ideas? Or is it they, something else they don't appreciate if that's what you believe to be true? So you see what I'm getting at with regard to trying to dig down and find out what the problems really are?
Well, I have a question. So I, I guess my understanding of, at least when we went through our training and WASB guidelines, when we're elected like a, as a person on our school board, we are here to like represent the students. And so Mary talks a lot about the constituents. And I talk more about the, the students and what's best for them. So I guess that's kind of where sometimes I get maybe slightly annoyed because I guess I want, I maybe we need to clarify what our job is up here. Is it really to advocate for the students of the district? Or is it to represent the constituents that voted for us?
It's both.
Well, who is, who is your main constituent?
Our students.
Your students are your main constituent because ultimately you are here to make sure that your children learn, right? That all children learn. If you look at any of the research that's out there, your students, they don't vote for you though, right? Isn't that interesting?
No, their parents do.
Their parents do. But the, the students voted, they might vote different than their parents, right? So the idea is, yes, your main focus is all children can learn. On the other hand, you do have constituents and parents and, and.
Residents.
Residents and all kinds of people who are your stakeholders. So are your students. So they go together. You can't forget one or the other. But ultimately, your main job is to create a learning environment for all students, right? That's the primary goal. And how you do that, oftentimes they will say that someone voted for you, although how do you know who voted for you? They may have said they voted for you, but you didn't see their ballot, right? I mean, you wouldn't really, really know who voted for you. So everybody is your constituent if you think of voters. It's not just those who voted for you. It's everybody because once you're voted in, you represent all constituents, right? And especially when you think of, about your board, you can't do anything on your own. You can only do this together. You can't vote on your, I mean, you take a vote, but you can't pass something on your own. You have five people that are voting. And so you have no authority on your own other than to be a board member, but not to pass policy or, you know, you can't decide, I think we're going to do this policy here. So does that make sense?
Yeah, but I mean, a school board represents, is a representative body. It's elected officials. It serves as a checks and balance to the administration. So, you know, for example, if someone, you know, has an issue, a parent has an issue or a student has an issue, they go through the chain of command on the school side. If they don't get resolution there, they come to the school board.
Sure.
And so, so as, yeah, so a school board, you know, isn't, isn't just focused on the curriculum in the classroom. It's focused on many other issues and it operates as a checks and balance in our representative democracy.
Absolutely. But ultimately, for what purpose? And that's, I think, what if, if you look at any of the information that's out there, any of the research that's out there, for what purpose? Whoops. Any school board that, that is most effective is focused on students and on the learning of students. That's what you exist for. That's what the school exists for. Otherwise, there's no reason, we don't exist, I mean, the school district does not exist for, for me as a, a person who doesn't have a student in the district. It exists for the students. It doesn't exist for their parents in the sense that the parents don't go to school. And so it's really to educate students.
Right. But the, the students are minors and their parents are in charge of them. And you, just for full disclosure, you're a former superintendent, correct?
No, I am not.
Oh.
No, I have never been anything in the school district.
What is, oh, okay. So you were just, how did you get involved in WASB?
Oh, I was recruited to become involved with WASB because of my background in mediation and conflict resolution. And so, yeah, I don't, I've not, I've worked with school districts, but I've never worked for a school district.
I'd like to go to Joe as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, so I think, Cheryl, thank you for coming. I think your question that I'd like to answer was, what can I do? You know, you know, I think we said, you know, how do we reflect internally? You know, how do we look inward first? And I think for me, when I look at this, what's important to me is I have a tendency to interrupt or to get passionate. So I think that's something that I want to work on is that I, I want to make sure that all voices are heard. I, I think it's important during our discussions that there's, all voices are heard. At the end of the day, we may have a different decision made than what we came in with, but I don't think it's a bad thing to build consensus. And so what I can do is make sure that all voices are heard, not to monopolize the conversation, not to interrupt the conversation. That's something that I can do.
Great. So you will put that in your mind before you come into the next board meeting that I need to be aware of that.
Yes.
Okay? Anybody else?
Go ahead, Rob.
So like the third one says, you know, discussions at board meetings with the dynamics of the board, right? Like, oh, you can't, three people in public can't be together because it's a quorum, blah, blah, blah. I feel like a lot of the issues on the board could probably be solved if we could communicate away from the board just as adults. But that's a problem with board dynamics. So I feel like issues just bubble and bubble, and then they come to the surface at a board meeting where if we were allowed to just get together and work our differences out like as adults, I believe these scores would be a lot higher.
That, that's a challenge. You're right.
Right. So we're handcuffed.
And yet that doesn't mean that you can't socialize.
True.
Right?
I mean, I.
You just can't have a quorum when you socialize.
Right. And again, I, I mean, I, I believe I get along with everyone individually on the board. Sometimes I feel like I play peacemaker behind the scenes. So to answer your question, I could maybe speak up more at board meetings. However, the problem is Tash and I are the new ones that Mary said. Sometimes you're like a deer in headlights because you're like, I don't know what to do. I've never been in this situation before. I just don't know what to say. So I think sometimes too, just lack of experience on a board, which is unfortunate because Tash and I could both be gone next year, you know? And it's like you get the experience and then you might not even be reelected back to the board.
It takes, people tell me it takes three years at least before you feel comfortable.
I can agree to that. I'm more comfortable as time goes on.
Yeah.
But you know, now you've said that in front of everybody. And so would it be so horrible to say, I'm feeling like a deer in headlights right now? Can someone enlighten me a little bit? Or to meet with Kim ahead of time if something's going to be on the agenda that is really beyond you? At convention last week, a woman said to me in a new board member gathering we had, she said, you know, I, I, we were going to do a referendum. I knew nothing about a referendum. I called my superintendent and said, help! And spent an hour going over things that were very, very helpful. So thinking about how can you use the rest of these people to get some help too?
I also think too that, you know, a lot of us run against each other. And as adults, sometimes it's just hard to put, you know, feelings.
Campaigns behind you.
Yep. And that's one of the reasons that they're starting to put stuff out to help people run a campaign that isn't going to result in that. Because you're right. If you've, if, if there's been a campaign run and you feel like you've been disparaged in that campaign, and then someone comes on the board, how do you, that's really hard. It's really hard for people. And I can tell you, I've worked with a lot of boards where that's happened.
Well, it's hard.
It's really hard.
It's hard too when supporters say stuff because then everything is, well, it comes back, oh, somebody said something, but it comes back to Rob or Tasha or whoever.
Like somebody else said it.
And it's unfortunate because then.
That's social media for you.
Right.
Yeah. It's a, and I think these are things so much to think about because we didn't think about them before very much. But we need to think about them now because they're beginning to cause problems on boards. And if you can't work together very well, it's hard, although you guys have been doing a great job, it looks like accomplishing things, but that gets, it makes you weary after a while.
I was just going to add, one of the other areas that we need, needed to work on was it said about, there's like a push-pull sometimes because one thing can, you know, domino to something else. So it said effective and efficient board meetings. And I, overall, I feel our meetings are efficient. Effective, I think, is in the eye of the beholder because it was said before that some come with more discussion than others to the board. But as I was saying before, sometimes many of us are doing some work behind the scenes, including with the constituents in this community. And it shouldn't be perceived that just because we don't talk to the community members in these meetings, that we are not connecting with them. And I'll say simply that we as a board are supposed to be up here talking to each other. And me, me as the board president, I have a role in that. And it will be an area I'll continue to work on is to remind people that we do need to be having the conver- continue to work on, is to remind people that we do need to be having the conversation amongst the board. Because that is, at that moment, who we're talking with, the work that we do behind the scenes as board members, to get prepared. And we all said we're prepared for these meetings, and I think that is a true statement. I think we, we need to obviously understand that, that it may look different for some people in terms of what the conversation is going to look like and sound like, and, you know, who are we addressing? And hopefully, in my opinion, our students are the body that we are here for. The constituents obviously put us here to make those decisions for the students. But we have to balance that. And I do think our meetings will be effective and efficient if we are talking to one another and having conversations with one another.
Great. So I, what I'm hearing from that is that you're going to really pay attention to try and make sure that the conversation is happening.
Yes.
And that you have discussion when you need to. Anything else that, before I run out the door, because I know I went over my time a bit now, I'm getting that evil, not the evil eye, but-
Sorry, you're worth it.
A little look over there, and rightfully so. So, anything else before I leave? I want to point out again that other sheet that I gave you, what do I do when I vote no? I think that's a really good example of helping your constituents know what your role is. And that it's, that you have policy and you have norms that, that you've all agreed to, that you will support the decisions of this board. And why? Why that's important. And I think sometimes that's helpful for people to know, to be educated, because let's face it, you're all talking about how hard it is to know what to do when you're on the board. The public has even less of that knowledge and background. And so it's helpful to help your public know what your role is too, because they don't always know either, just like we don't always know.
Yeah, and I, I just want to clarify, I didn't mean to, so many people in the Wisconsin Association of School Boards are former administrators or superintendents, and they come with their own perspective. And so that's why I brought that up.
Yep.
So thank you for clarifying that.
Not me. All right, thank you so much, and keep up the good work.
And Cheryl, I want to say a special thanks to you, because, you know, we as a board have had the experience to work with you at our annual board retreat. You've come back, and I think you've been able to kind of get an umbrella of what we are as a board. Obviously, we don't talk to each other on a regular basis, but for you to sift through our selfie val and help us see, you know, where, where we are shining in the areas that we work, I think is very important. And so I want to thank you. I think you're an asset to WASB, and thank you for being with us tonight.
Oh, you bet. Thank you for having me, and good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. All right. We are gonna move on to 5.1 now, which is the 2023-24 financial audit. Exciting to follow right after that. So I think we have someone coming in virtually to join us for that. Safe travels to you, Cheryl.
Yep.
We have someone online?
So, yeah, we do. So Maria's just stepping back, so I think she'll be able to cast that onto the screen. We've got Brad Porter from Lutterbach and Amen, and I will let him introduce himself.
No, we need-
All right, one second.
All right, one second.
Ready to go?
Yep, go ahead.
Yep, go ahead. Yep, go. Excellent. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Porter, and I am here on behalf of Lutterbach and Amen as the principal overseeing the district's financial statement audit process. I will be just giving a brief recap of the documents that we've issued at the conclusion of our fiscal year 2023 year-end audit cycle. I'd like to start with some thank yous tonight. One to the board for the opportunity to remote in here with some of this nasty weather we've got going on the Wisconsin-Illinois border. I truly appreciate that. And another thank you to the board for the opportunity to work with the district. This was the first year working with LNA, and I know I've got nothing but glowing things to say about our team's relationship with the district and its staff. So we greatly appreciate all of the efforts of the finance team. They were truly a joy to work with. They ensured that we had everything that we needed in a timely manner. In fact, before the audit even started, we had most of what we needed uploaded to our portal. So we're very, very grateful of the efforts of Jonathan, Peter, Jamie, and all of those directly involved with the audit process. We understand that this year posed some challenges with new GASB standard implementations, a new financial reporting framework through the DPI amongst new auditors as well. So they took all of those challenges in stride, and again, we're just so thankful for how this first year went from our perspective. Now, there are three pieces of required communication that we issue at the conclusion of each audit cycle, and I'm gonna do my best to keep it very high level tonight, covering some of the most important items within each of those documents. And I do believe I may have a, a screen to share at this point.
Yeah, go.
All right. Good deal. I will share my screen, bear with me one second. And each of you should have received a copy of each of these documents at this point, so feel free to follow along. Now, on the screen here, we have what's known as our SAS 114 letter. Ultimately, Statement on Auditing Standard Number 114 requires us to state whether or not we had any disagreements or difficulties that we had encountered throughout the audit process. And I am happy to report that I've highlighted a couple of key sentences within this letter. We had no significant difficulties and no disagreements with management throughout the entirety of our audit process. Moving into our annual financial report, this is going to be our audit document. Again, there's so much information here, I'll be the first to admit that. I know sometimes the financial statements can be a little bit difficult to follow, so I'm gonna do my best to point out sections that I feel would be most important to the board in gaining an understanding of fiscal year 2023, kind of from a bird's eye view. So we'll begin ironically with page one. Page one is what we call our independent auditor's report. This is undeniably the most important set of three pages within your audit document. In addition to stating your responsibility as management of the district, which is to provide a clean set of financial statements for us to work off of, we then go on to state what our responsibility is for your financial statements, and that is to ensure that we're generating an opinion over the financial statements provided to us. I'm happy to report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, we have issued what is known as an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest form of opinion that any governmental unit can receive. So congratulations to the district and the finance team for all their efforts paying off. An unmodified opinion essentially states that as your auditors, we believe the financial statements are presented fairly in all material aspects. Especially in a first year, it's crucial that we're doing a number of walkthroughs of the different internal control functions. We had no significant findings or weaknesses that we had identified throughout the course of those walkthrough processes. So I think that goes to show kind of how, you know, the level of importance that is placed on safeguards over district funds. Moving on to page 11. I'd like to point out a couple financial highlights for the fiscal year. This is going to be what we call our Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. Now, that is a fancy name for our Fund Level Income Statement. You'll see three major funds presented in each respective column here, general, community service, and debt service. I'd like to point out that this non-major category here, there is a certain threshold that a, a individual fund must meet to be considered a major fund. So in order to find the fund level financial statements for some of your non-major funds, such as your special revenue, food service, and your capital-related funds, you can refer to pages 84 through 87 in the back schedules of the audit document. For fiscal year 2023, I'm gonna hone in on this third line up from the bottom, which is what we call net change in fund balance. That is essentially going to be the net of our revenues, over or under our expenditures for the given fiscal year. So for fiscal year 2023, the general fund had a reduction of about $249,000 in our overall fund balance, ending the year with $7,032,462 in reserves or fund balance. Moving to the right there, we have community service, coming in with $120,000 increase, ending net position of $407,000 rounded. And we have our debt service fund with an increase of $2.2 million, ending the year with about $3.12 million in accumulated fund balance.
Brad, could I just ask a question?
About $3.2 million in accumulated fund balance.
Brad, can you hear me?
Now, I wanted to point out a couple crucial footnotes for you-
Brad, can we, Brad, can we stop?
...to some capital and debt-related matters, if you can turn with me to page 26.
But it's gonna be, Maria, if you could get his attention.
Um, could we take a, could we take a break for a second?
Sure, of course.
Okay.
And then, can you mute? Brad, we had a question here from one of the board members.
Yes, Brad, before you move too far on, I- Got some feedback. Can you hear me, Brad?
Sorry, I can't hear on my, on my end unless Jonathan's unmuted.
Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now, Brad?
I can.
Okay. So my question just was under the non-major- I was just curious as to the other category, what that would entail, because you said there's a certain threshold, but that other category, non-major, is like over a million dollars? So just wondering what something like that might entail? If it, you know, I don't want to get too far off, but just curious.
No, of course. So there is a certain percentage of total assets or total revenues that must be met of the district's entire net position. So you take all district assets and all district revenues, and then you assess each one of those funds in relation to the district as a whole. And there are certain thresholds that require the funds to be considered major and/or non-major for the, a given fiscal year. So the specific threshold, I'd have to chat with our report writing team, they're gonna be the ones on the backend doing a lot of the actual report formality formulas. But I know it's a certain percentage of total assets or total revenues in order to be reported as a major fund.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully that helps to answer the question.
Yes.
Great, sounds good. All right. So let's move on to page 26. On page 26, we're gonna have what we call our capital asset footnote disclosure. I'd like to highlight a couple things. The first of which, you're gonna know at the top of that, you're gonna see at the top of that, restated beginning balances column, the term restated. When working with the district, we had identified that the detail that was ultimately coming out of the fixed asset reporting software was not aligning with the prior fiscal year's audit. So what we did was, we had a, a conversation pertaining to ensuring that we can true-up the beginning capital asset balances to match the figures from, ultimately coming from your capital asset software. So you will see that. You'll also see we had about $2.7 million in total governmental additions or increases for this fiscal year. Moving on to page 27, we've got our long-term debt section here. Nothing too crazy happening this year on the debt front, but I did just want to point out that this is where you're gonna find each of your outstanding pieces of debt. It'll have information on ending pension liabilities or assets, leases, as well as your legal debt limit. Any additional questions on the audit report before I move into the management letter?
Any questions, board?
Excellent, sounds good. So ultimately, you know, as auditors, our job is not just to provide an opinion on the financial statements, it's to provide value to the district as well. We audit a number of school districts, a number of other governmental entities, taking bits and pieces from what each of them are doing, what the best practices are across the industry. So we seek to provide recommendations in our management letter. We don't frown upon that. We, you know, we want to issue these so that the board has an idea of ways that they can improve. So falling in the scope of the management letter can be things such as best practices as I had alluded to. It can be upcoming accounting pronouncements, which are purely transparency-related, and it can also include any internal control weaknesses that we've identified. So I'm happy to report, I think four current recommendations is pretty impressive for a first-year school district audit, two of which are purely transparency-related. We've got GASB 100, which is a new statement that's gonna be effective for 2024. And we have GASB 101, which is gonna be impacting the reporting for your accrued, sick, and vacation time. I'm actually going to be giving a presentation on GASB 100 and 101 at the accounting conference, so we'll have quite a bit of content material published for the team to ensure smooth implementation of these two standards. In theory, GASB 100, the one that's gonna be in effect for next year, shouldn't impact the district if we don't have any significant errors that we identified from the previous audit cycle. So this one will kind of fall under the radar for 2024, hopefully in a perfect world. And GASB 101, again, will change the way in which your accrued, sick, and vacation times are, the liability is being calculated in your audit document. The third one is what we call collateralization of deposits. The FDIC will ensure up to $250,000 of your securities that are held at a specific bank. Outside of that, the district is on their own to seek third-party collateralization. Jonathan and I had a great conversation on this. Sounds like he was already in the works of working with your primary bank to establish this tri-party collateralization agreement. So we did have a comment here indicating that there was a portion of uncollateralized balances as of 6/30/2023. And last but not least, we have our funds over budget comment. We are required to state whether or not the district had exceeded budget in a specific fund. We ultimately take the budget that was finalized and published into your accounting software, and in theory, uploaded to DPI's budget reporting module. And we include the access of what actual expenditures were over what our fund level budgeted financial statements were. So we've itemized those here. I think nothing overly concerning, as with any budget, you have certain unforeseen circumstances that occur, untimely purchases that you didn't know you were gonna need, some of those factors. So I just wanted to, to comment on that as well. And we had no other management letter comments outside the, the four that we've discussed here tonight. With that, that would conclude my coverage of the three documents that we've issued. Happy to field any questions that you may have.
Okay, board, so this is our annual report. It is a little longer, Brad, than the past. I think it was like 89 pages last year, we're over 100 now. But I, I wonder if any of the board members have any questions regarding this? Or, or Jonathan?
And Maria, if you want to unmute now, that may be a little bit easier.
Or Jonathan, if you have anything to add.
Could you, could you ask him, Jonathan? What were the, so the pages he highlighted again, page 12? Did you?
Yeah, Brad, could you go over the pages that you were highlighting once again for the board?
I sure can. So pages one through three are gonna be our independent auditor's report, or our audit opinion.
Three.
One through-
Page, page 11 will be our fund level income statement for our major funds. Page 26 is gonna be our capital asset footnote disclosure. Pages 27 through 30 are our long-term debt. And then pages 84 through 87 are gonna be your non-major financial funds, in terms of the, the balance sheets and income statements for those respective funds. There's also a plethora of different budgetary schedules in the back of the audit. If that catches your interest, if you're curious how a certain department performed or function, you can kind of take a peek at revenues and expenses by line item in the back schedules as well.
And yet, an unmodified opinion, congratulations, Jonathan.
I had asked Jonathan earlier too about the collateralization of deposits. I don't know if you want to just give a little overview of what we talked about?
Yes, we talked about that we'll have larger balances within the local government investment pool, which municipalities throughout the state utilize. But as Brad is pointing out, there's an increased collateralization threshold, which is at about $400,000. But there are times where we are keeping balances that are well in excess of a million or multi-million, because that is one of the highest investment rate vehicles that we have. So had conversation with banking, banking institutions that we currently work with to discuss what the difference in interest rate revenues would be if we looked at other products that would have that, that contract in place to place collateral behind those deposits. And it sounds like overall, that can be done with some minimal loss to revenues. Like, there's a cost to seeking that product from a bank, but it would provide additional security for funds that we have in the district. So we're evaluating that, and I would anticipate that we will have that complete by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year, and we'll address that when we get to the fiscal audit. But we will bring that back to the board as that's addressed.
Question, good question.
Great to hear. We always love when our clients are in the process of implementing- Great to hear. We always love when our clients are in the process of implementing some of the comments before we even get a chance to discuss them at the board meetings, so.
And the funds over budget, though, I think that was more just of a implementation of the system, right?
So there was a full conversion of the state system, as was done with student information a couple of years ago, to directly link our Skyward financial software with the state portal. And that timeline took significantly longer. And so it impacted our ability to make some of that, those connections by the time we got to the audit for 2023. But that's been addressed. We've finished that. We've finished the implementation to the statewide system. So I don't anticipate that being an issue going forward. And Tasha and I talked a little bit about just timing of budgetary transfers during the year. It's longstanding practice that that happens at the very end of the fiscal year. But there's advantages that we discussed of why we may bring that sooner. So we'll review calendar reports, and we may change that timeline here for the spring.
Okay, great. Anyone else? No one else? All right, and Jonathan, we do this annual report. Can you just, like, sum up, we do this because why?
The board does this because you are getting the opportunity to speak independently to your district auditors that the district has hired. And so this is an important board responsibility in terms of fiscal management, that you are able to have that direct connection. You have a management letter that's been issued to the board, and you're able to engage in a conversation that's unfiltered, right? It's not going through me. But in terms of checks and balances, like what was discussed earlier, there should be checks and balances for a well, well-functioning school board that you're having these conversations. And then there are items that are brought up and addressed by Brad that then the board is following up on to make sure that they're getting addressed and corrected.
Great, thank you. Great explanation. All right, anyone else? If not, Brad, I want to thank you for being with us and, and being our new fiscal, what would you call it, agent?
Auditor.
Yes, and thank you for your hard work and working with our wonderful business manager, Jonathan, and his team. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the opportunity to remote in, and I hope everyone has a great rest of your evening.
Thanks, Brad.
Take care. All right, we are going to head back to the beginning of our meeting. Agenda item 1.1 and 1.2 are our regular meeting minutes of January 8th and our closed session meeting minutes from January 8th. If there's no problem with it, we could probably take these both as one, unless anyone has any concerns. Otherwise, I'm going to be looking for a motion to approve items 1.1 and 1.2.
I move approval of the regular board meeting minutes and the closed session board meeting minutes of January 8th, 2024, as outlined in agenda item 1.1 and 1.2.
A second. So we do have a motion and a second to approve our regular meeting minutes and our closed session meeting minutes, items 1.1 and 1.2, from January 8th, as outlined in our agenda. Any further discussion? Matt, we'll take a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, and I'm yes, motion carries. We are now on to items two, which is our monthly financials and our revenue and expenditure reports. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Jonathan Mitchell, if you have anything you'd like to share.
Yeah, so this is a financial report for the month of December. We are at 23.98% of budgeted revenues that compares with 25.85 in the prior year. And the, the variance being the difference in SER federal revenues in the year-over-year comparison from some of the larger projects. Tasha and I had some conversations about that with the last meeting, where we were looking at November financials. In December, if you look at the linked revenue report, you'll see now that we do have federal revenues of $253,000 through the month of December, a lower amount than we had at this point last year. But now you're seeing those federal revenues come in. And so we're on pace for what we would project. And then on the expenditure side, for similar reasons, 33.3% below last year's current number of 35.90%. So I would say overall, we're currently on, continue to be on target for the budget deficit that's approved within the budget of 1.58 million. We provided an update to spending of the stimulus funding. So we have just the SER III funding remaining, and that ticked up from 85% spent to 86% after we included the month of December. And that's the last allocation that we have. So happy to take any questions. There's no checks in this board meeting because they were approved earlier this month.
Okay, so discussion, anyone questions for Jonathan? Seeing none. Jonathan, I do have one. Just, are we on track to use the full 100% of our SER III money?
Yes, we are contracted between staff that are working in the district, as well as we're contracted for the HVAC project for summer of 2024. And we talked about that at the recent board meeting about facilities projects. So those two items are the remaining spend on SER III.
Great, thank you. It's hard to believe we're already at the end of our third SER stimulus funding, but that was very helpful over the last several years. So any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to action item 4.1. I believe we should probably take these separate, 4, 1A and B. We have an administrator compensation structure and also approval of the reemployment of administrative staff.
So, yep, I'll begin with administrator compensation structure and then speak to the reemployment of administrative staff. So the board currently has a compensation structure in place for our teacher group and for our paraprofessional group. And that gives, that structure is set up to have performance-based increases beyond the cost of living increases that exist, that are part of inflationary costs. There is no compensation structure for administrators in place at this time. And I am recommending that the board adopt a compensation structure to be able to provide merit-based increases to administrators. And so the compensation structure outlines criteria by which the board is direct, provides direction on how administrator compensation is determined on an annual basis, allowing for adjustments based on merit and performance of their duties as well as their placement in the market. It also allows consideration for special certifications, which is on, in place for the other employee groups in terms of a compensation structure. It does provide direction in terms of a performance improvement plan and how increases should be handled and annual adjustments for a cost of living over a 12-year period, a 12-month period, not a 12-year period, I apologize. So at this point, the board currently sets a budget for cost of living or CPI increases and sets a budget for merit increases and then discusses each individual employee. What this does is it sets a structure by which you authorize me as an administrator to apply with no merit increases to exceed 3%. And it takes into consideration where they are in the market. So if an employee, if an administrator is, it establishes ranges for every employee, for every administrator position. There's a minimum and a maximum and a midpoint. And the midpoint is at the 50th percentile of the market using comparison groups. So in that situation, if an administrator is in the bottom 25% or close to the bottom end of the range, and they have outstanding performance, then I would have direction from the board that I can consider a merit increase of up to 3% to move that person towards their midpoint. If an administrator is outside of the maximum of their range, so they're above the top end of the range because they've been in the position for a while or they negotiated to be placed at a higher level coming in, then they would, regardless of their merit, they may get a 0% increase because we're taking that into consideration. So I'm asking the board to approve a compensation structure that mirrors, while it's slightly different in its structure, but approve a compensation structure in the way that there is currently a teacher compensation structure that's approved and a paraprofessional compensation structure that is approved. The board still retains the authority and continues to determine what is that CPI increase. And this year, the board, in their budget approval, said we are allowing for 4% of cost of living increases, even though the 12-month period of CPI is listed as 8%. We are not able to give 8% raises, and we are doing a 4% increase for cost of living. And within that salary, there is capacity to do some merit-based adjustments. And it's recommended that we use market ranges because, otherwise, it could be a poor retention strategy to freeze people. And there are a number of administrators in other districts who have moved on because there is no structure by which to give merit-based increases. And so it is important that if one of our strategies is to attract and retain high-quality staff, that we have some mechanism to be able to reward outstanding performance and keep pace with the market. So that is.
Did I hear you say there's a merit base in place for paras and teachers?
There is a, there is an increase based on effective performance and years of service, and so.
Well, just the salary schedule, they move up a step.
Salary schedule, correct, which is higher than the cost of living, and the merit is based on effective performance.
But you consider that a merit-based pay?
It is above cost of living, yes.
So the steps within the teacher's salary schedule are merit-based?
Is based on effective performance, and so it's based on your evaluation as being effective.
Oh, I've just never heard it described as a merit-based pay before.
Yeah, no, your advancement in the structure is based on effective performance in your, in your job. And that is clearly outlined, that effective or distinguished performance, you advance on the salary structure. If you are in need of improvement, then you are frozen on the salary structure.
Okay, so we've frozen people on the salary structure in the past? The teachers?
Not all of them.
Yeah, no, but like, there's been teachers that that's happened.
There have been teachers who have been evaluated in need of improvement and have been frozen at their current performance, at their current level.
Yeah, I just, I, I understood merit pay to be something separate than a salary schedule for teachers. But you're saying that you wouldn't describe it as one and the same?
The salary structure currently approved by the board allows for increases for teachers who have effective or distinguished performance to advance a step on the salary structure. Teachers who are evaluated as in need of improvement or on a performance improvement plan are frozen at their current level of performance. And 99.9% of our teachers have effective or distinguished performance and are advanced on the salary structure. And then for those that are not, then that is one of the impact of their performance, is that they don't advance.
Based on the state tool, educator effectiveness?
We use the.
Didn't mean to catch you off guard.
I, that you said a word, and it disrupted my thinking, so I, it's CISA six, but it's got a name. Effectiveness Project. We use the Effectiveness Project system to evaluate performance based on six standards areas.
So there's a 4% increase per step, which you, you're describing as merit-based?
Nope, it's not 4%, it is averages 4% across the steps. There are some steps based on the research that the board considered in that teachers leave the profession within the first five years, teachers leave the profession within that 10-year period. And so there is an, there's a higher percentage increase at the fifth, the fifth year and the 10th year on the salary structure for teachers. The paraprofessionals was determined last year, and there were significant increases made to the compensation structure because they had fallen out of market alignment.
So there's a, there's a percentage, it could be up to 4% in each step for the teacher's salary?
More than 4% in one step, and it's slightly less than 4% in other steps, but it averages 4% across those steps.
Generally represents a year of service, you're moving up a step each year. And then in addition to that, there's a 4% CPI raise for teachers, we're still talking about?
No, those within the structure do not get a cost of living increase. And other than last year, the steps tend to have a higher increase than a simple cost of living. And so that it, it accounts for cost of living increases and salary advancement within the profession, within the structure.
There are some teachers that do receive the 4% CPI, but not all of our staff.
Those teachers who have reached the maximum on the salary structure and are beyond that top step are negotiate with the Greendale Education Association for a cost of living increase. And you have not settled with the Greendale Education Association for this year's increase for those teachers who are not on the structure.
Yeah, no, the only.
On the agenda tonight, we're looking to approve the administrative.
I know, and I, the reason I'm asking those questions is because we, you know, at the annual meeting in September, we approved a 4% CPI increase for administrators. And I just wanted you to explain the raises that the, that the teachers are getting. And then in addition to the 4% raise we approved in September for administrators, this item is acting, is asking us to approve an additional up to 3% merit-based pay.
No, this is approving a structure by which the existing budget is allocated. So you approved a budget that allocated an amount of money for salary increases. This approval is the structure by which to distribute that amount of money that you have already approved.
Which is 4%?
You approved a set budget for salaries that includes money for merit-based increases that this salary structure would provide direction in how to apply.
So, for example, if an administrator is making $150,000, they'll get the CPI of 4%, which is $6,000. And they could then also get a merit-based pay increase of 3% for a total of $10,500 increase.
To be clear, that number is outside of all ranges except mine, so.
But that's an option?
No one would get it because that is, because you approved my salary, that I am outside of the salary structure. You approved that directly. You've already made that approval this year. And so if I'm, if you're looking at that number, no, no one would get any additional merit increase because that is outside of any of the ranges.
So, I mean, I just used $150,000 because it's an average salary. Most of the administrators on the salary schedule are making over $100,000, correct?
Not 150, 100.
Right, $100,000.
There are a number of, that the range is around $100,000, yeah.
So maybe, yeah, for anyone who's curious, would this document and this, these ranges and these market values be available?
Yes, we have used publicly available data that is searchable on DPI to set ranges. And it is based on comparison to other districts within CISA I, which includes Milwaukee, Racine, Kenosha, Waukesha, Ozaki. And in our market analysis, we omitted large districts that we do not see as comparable because it skews the data. And so we used a tighter pool. And in the report that you received, we identified what those district comparisons are to establish those market ranges. We use those that are close in size, including Shorewood, Grafton, Arrowhead, Whitnell, Cotahay, Port Washington, Peewaqui, Cedarburg, Whitefish Bay, South Milwaukee. And then we used peer groups of benchmarks, which is Shorewood, Whitnell, Peewaqui, Cedarburg, Whitefish Bay, McQuan, Thievesville, Greenfield, Menominee Falls, Franklin, New Berlin, Hamilton, Muskego, Norway, and Umbruck. If there were outliers who had a significantly higher or a significantly low outlier, we threw those out in the data to determine ranges because there are some outliers that are in the region, in the range. So we use that data that is publicly available to establish the ranges, both this document and the data that is used. Both this document and the data that is used is publicly available and can be seen by anyone.
So, so that's how you determine the market value?
That's how we conduct, how, that's how we developed the market ranges because we are in competition with other districts for employment of administrative staff. And we want to retain, retain high-quality staff and not lose them to other districts simply because there's no opportunity for them to be paid their value in the market.
Is length of service or experience in the current job taken into consideration as far as merit base?
Yes, I mean, length of service in the job, if you've been in the job for a long time, means you are probably at the top end of the range, and there's not going to be much room for growth. Those that are new are likely going to be lower in the range, depending on negotiation into the position and years of experience coming into the position. And then movement within there would be considered. If you have an experienced administrator, they may have been placed in their first year at the midpoint of the market because of experience in other districts. So unlike the teacher structure or the paraprofessional structure, it is not a rigid, every year you get exactly this much. It is, here is the market, and given where you are in the market, your performance and the pool of money that the, the board has authorized, I would be using that information to make a decision if there is a merit increase warranted for any individual administrators in the system.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions?
I, I think this is helpful. So in the business community, in the professional world, you know, I know teachers sometimes get stuck on a salary structure or a step increase. But in the business world, job titles have salary ranges. And I think that's what this provides. And that provides a transparency to the community to say, this job title has the job, has a salary range of, here's the minimum, here's a midpoint, here's the maximum. And that, that's what you can expect. That's what our community can expect. So I, I think this is a, a nice, nice effort that you and Julie did to, to put this based on the market. So like you said, how do we attract and retain quality staff? We provide them with a salary structure that says, these roles qualify for these salaries, the salary range.
Other questions?
I just think this helps make us, you know, competitive with other districts.
Yeah.
So we have a kind of a model to go by.
I was just going to ask, in terms of a salary structure, obviously, times will change. How often, as a board, will this be an annual review of the salary structure?
Um, yes, going forward, just as you do with the teacher contracts. So state law requires that administrators, administrator contracts be reviewed for either automatic renewal or notice of nonrenewal on or before January 31st. Teachers, it is on or before, and I'm, I might get this wrong. I believe it's May 15th. We usually issue the contracts in the month of April at, to move forward. And at the time that the contracts are issued, you also approve a salary structure for teachers. So it is an annual approval of the structure. And so if there are adjustments that need to be made within the structure, it is made and recommended with the approval of contracts. So the reason we're bringing this forward today is because this is the meeting at which every year you approve the reemployment of administrators. So you issue contracts to those licensed administrators. And approving the salary structure in conjunction with it helps to make sure that we are taking those together. So to answer your question specifically, it will be an annual approval. This is just the first time we've established a structure.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? If not, we are set to take a vote on this one. So it is item 4.1A. It's the Administrator Compensation Structure. So I would be looking for a motion to approve?
I move approval of personnel as outlined in Agenda Item 4.1A to approve Administrator Compensation Structure.
A second. So we do have a motion and a second to approve the Administrator Compensation Structure. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
And I'm yes, motion carries. Onto item 4.1B. It is the approval of the reemployment of our administrative staff. And we've had a chance to look at that. Dr. Mizik, anything else you want to add?
By law, there is an expect, there's a requirement that the board either take action or contracts automatically renew. And I have, I'm recommending re, reemployment and contract offers to the existing administrators who hold a license. My contract is included at the recommendation of the board president.
And these are two-year contracts?
They are a contract to be issued for June, from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026. So two years, yes. And that is the maximum allowable by law.
Any further questions? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
I move approval of personnel as outlined in Agenda Item 4.1B to approve the reemployment of administrative staff, including our superintendent district administrator, Dr. Mizik.
I'll say it.
So we do have a motion and a second to approve the reemployment of our administrative staff. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion carries.
I would recommend that the board reorder the agenda again and take item 4.4 before item 4.3 so that you have a policy, a new policy approved before you open seats for open enrollment because the second reading of the policy is regarding open enrollment.
I move to reorder the agenda items that we take Agenda Item 4.4 in advance of taking Agenda Item 4.3.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second to reorder the agenda, take 4.4 prior to 4.3. Any further discussion? Not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion carries. Before we do go on, it is getting close to nine o'clock. Our student board members are probably getting geared up for that second half of the year. So you are welcome to leave at any time. And thank you guys for both being here tonight. Okay, so we'll move on to our policies, our second reading. And Dr. Mizik, anything? We have a cover letter there.
So you have, there are recommended revisions that you reviewed in the first reading at the last meeting. And we recommend approval of the policy. The changes here are clarity and specificity around selection of open enrollment students through the application process and clarity around attendance and rules and regulations around truancy for the purpose of an open enrollment student that can be dismissed by not attending under the law.
Could someone from the Policy Committee give us a summary on whether, you know, how this was discussed in committee? Was it generally in favor? Were there any objections or questions?
As we discussed at the last meeting, this one did not go through policy, given the timeline. And so we brought it to the entire board at the first reading. And so it was discussed at the last meeting. If you guys want to speak to it, you can, but it did not go through policy.
Correct, I think that's exactly what happened. I mean, we discussed at the last meeting, given the time-sensitive nature of approving open enrollment. You may recall that at our last board meeting, we discussed a process by which we went outside of our typical policy committee process and brought to the committee of the whole or the full board at that time.
I remember that there were some community questions about that. Were those addressed?
Yes, the question was specifically around preference for siblings. And there is preference given to siblings who are currently attending. So if you are a family with three children and one student is currently an open enrollment student, and the other two siblings apply, they would be given preference. So there was a question as to whether or not siblings would continue to get preference, and the answer is yes.
And just a clarification, that does not, there's no change to our existing policy there?
There's no change to our existing, our previous policy in practice, correct?
I just had one question regarding the waiting list. And there was just a little, were, I think, remaining applicants. With, with our open enrollment, how does that get determined, what order the waiting list is in?
It is a random selection process, and we pull. Jonathan, you want to speak to the specific? Because you've been present, I have not.
Yep, so I work with the support staff team member who helps with determining it, and then we do this process together. We use a website called random.org to make sure that it's completely unbiased in terms of how we go through that selection process. We'll identify how many seats are available and then how many priority applicants there are. And so that may determine the first set. Because if we have a situation, let's say we have a grade level where there are three priority applicants, but there's only two seats available, we first have to run a lottery of those priority students first to determine who would get offered those first two seats. And then if we had 20 other applicants, once we've determined how those first three seats are going to be figured out, we'd run a separate random selection process to determine the rest of the waitlist. So it varies a little bit, depending on how many applications, how many priority apps, and how many seats are available. But it's completely randomized. And then we keep and back up, like, all the documentation of what we, the numbers that we ran. And then those numbers are all plugged into worksheets, and we utilize DPI templates to issue acceptance and denial letters for those families.
And the way it goes with, if there are families that have multiple siblings, each sibling is handled individually? Then, as far as the lottery?
So a scenario where you'd have one student who may be in the district, and you're saying there's two other siblings who aren't, and there's going to be sibling preference, each of those siblings would each have that preference for their application. If there's an open enrollment application for each of those students, and they're not currently attending, but they do have a sibling who is currently attending.
Thank you.
I had a question from a community member regarding open enrollment students. Are they held to any stricter behavior guidelines or conduct?
Is that part of this policy or?
Well, it's the open enrollment policy, so I think it's worth bringing up.
Go on, let me look.
The only questions that will come up as part of the application process is whether there's any expulsion-related information for a student who's applying for open enrollment. So we do ask that question for all students as we're, sorry, as we're preparing the applications to do the random lottery. And if there would be that information, that would go to Dr. Mizik for a review.
But once a student is in the system, is a Greendale School District student?
There is a section on termination of open enrollment, Section E, and that gives all of the reasons that a student would be not able to continue, that would be, their open enrollment seat would be revoked. And so that gives you.
Okay, thank you.
All the circumstances in which an open enrollment seat would be revoked for a student once they are in the district.
Okay.
Into, I maybe had to go along with Mary's thing. I don't think, what we, what we don't do is we don't set a separate criteria. There's a student handbook. Students are expected to follow the same guidelines, right? Whether they're open enrollment or not.
There is a code of conduct that is outside of the open enrollment policy. Student handbooks apply to all students.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I just wanted to, anyone listening, and this policy is number 5113.
To the conversation to the board.
One, well, I, we didn't talk about the, the, the policy we're discussing is policy 11, 5113. And Section E addresses the question that I raised on behalf of a resident parent.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, so we are set, we are set to approve the open enrollment, item 4.4, I'm sorry, the policies, Policy Second Reading 4.4. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, I move approval of policy, was it 5113? Open enrollment program is outlined in Agenda Item 4.4.
I second it.
So we do have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item 4.4, which is our policy's second reading of open enrollment. Any further discussion? If not, let's take a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion carries. So we're moving back to 4.3, which is the approval of open enrollment. Dr. Mizik, anything additional to add there?
So applying that policy, there is a recommendation to approve 35 open, new open enrollment seats for the 24-25 school year. That includes five kindergarten, six second graders, one fourth grader, 10 sixth graders, five seventh graders, and eight ninth graders.
And again, this year, we have no open seats for special ed, correct?
There is not a recommendation based on the calculations. There is not capacity for additional open enrollment students who require special education services in any of the disability categories.
So any discussion about the open enrollment report we received? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve?
I move approval of open enrollment as outlined in Agenda Item 4.3.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item 4.3, which is open enrollment. Any further discussion? Then we'll take a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion carries. We're back to item 5. We'll go on to the 5.2, which is the Clerk's Election Candidate Report.
All right, so as the cover memo states, you know, five Greendale citizens have filed their Declaration of Candidate C for the April 2nd spring election for school board. With two regular three-year seats to be filled and five candidates, there will be a primary election on February 20th, 2024. The names of the candidates in the order have been drawn, and they're listed in the cover memo to Agenda Item 5.2. I'd be remiss if I didn't also state that we need to be mindful and not campaign from this board table. I think it's important to note, it helps me just make sure that I say it out loud so I can hear it myself. And I think that includes any electioneering for village board candidates as well.
Any discussion? I, I will just mention there is a candidate forum tomorrow night. I think Dr. Mizik said that in her communications, and that will be held in the multipurpose room here at Greendale High School at 6:30?
Seven.
7:30, I'm sorry, 7:30.
No, seven.
7 o'clock until.
With questions being accepted until 6:45.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion there? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5.4, which is our school board professional development. In particular, we just attended the state convention for WASB last week. Many great sessions. And Dr. Mizik and I had an opportunity to present about our board selfie valve tool that we just talked about tonight. That was very well-received and attended. I will open it up to the board and, and also our administration because we had several administrators attend. So we had some guiding questions from Dr. Mizik. They're found on our agenda. I'll just read the questions. You don't have to answer specific to any one or all three, but these are some of our guiding questions. How did the session you attended extend your understanding of the work of the school board or one of the strategic goals? Second question is, what are the implications of your learning on board practice, policy, or engagement? And third is, how did the convention support your development as a board member? And just being mindful that our, our community did elect to allow us to attend these types of professional development opportunities. So I'm going to open it up to the board for some sharing. Anybody want to go?
Well, I was at the, I guess, resolution, the delegate assembly for that. And I can give a little overview of, I guess. And I can give a little overview of, I guess, what happened there. All the resolutions that we had looked at passed. The one that we talked about here specifically was a stipend for cooperating teachers. I did make and write an amendment for that. So I did remove the Wisconsin DPI designated cooperating teachers verbiage and then added in that it would need to be funded by the state and that passed as well. So that was nice. We, they, we did talk about the MPS resolution, having screeners be available to students in multiple languages. That did not get a two-thirds vote from the delegates, so that did not make it to the floor. But I'm assuming that it will be looked at again next year. As far as me, it was, it was a learning experience for me, just the amount of, I guess, debate that goes back and forth into some of the amendments and some people are very passionate about what they want to say.
And I appreciate you attending. We did streamline some things this year so that it was a little more focused. So hopefully that helped. In particular, they were asking for amendments ahead of time. There were also about ten less resolutions this year.
Yeah, people still came though without any amendments. So that's kind of what took, you know, strung out the, the session longer.
Okay. Anyone else like to share some of the sessions? There were so many good ones.
Tasha and I attended one on referendums, which went over the different types of referendums, you know, capital operational, reoccurring, non-reoccurring, identifying the needs for referendums, referendum history. I don't know if you want to jump in, but I felt like a lot of it was geared towards if you're deciding on going to a referendum and we've already kind of decided that. So a lot of the discussion was kind of discussions that we've already had. But I learned more about the different types of referendums, some of the needs for them and why they occur, especially the reoccurring and non-reoccurring. So that was interesting.
Was that a heavily attended session, I'm assuming?
Very, Joe, Joe was there too. It was, yes, it was a full house.
Oh, I mean, it's a hot topic across the state right now.
Well, yeah, because they went over to just, and I got to find it. But they talked about just how many districts have gone to referendum and it was a lot more than I had previously thought.
I think they're a little more pessimistic though. They made it, they, they kept stating that a lot of districts, once you start like in referendum mode, you stay in referendum mode. And I don't think that's like our goal here. And we're hoping to advocate at the state level for changes to the revenue formulas. And I'm not sure, the older gentleman that was there, he, he, he was a little more pessimistic. He didn't see things changing at the state level anytime soon, so I hope that's not true.
Right. Anything else?
I, I attended several, I, I, what I thought to be, there was a lot on school funding, but I just opted for the following sessions. School library, hot topics and book bans. Artificial intelligence, enhancing teaching and learning with AI. Title nine, what's next? Vaping and other safety topics. Celebrating teacher impact. Access to public records and personnel files. Controversial curriculum in the classroom. School law topics. New Wisconsin career in college readiness. And you were, this year they had a computer set up so you could print all the handouts. So I, if any of those sound interesting to any board members, I printed all those. The school law one was extremely long, but I, they are, I have them if you're interested in a copy or reading my copy when I'm done.
Did you, did they also, are they going to be posting any of that on the website? Did they mention?
I don't think so. I think it was available during the timeframe. You could, you could download the printouts from the app or you could go to, they had a free printing station. And so I took full advantage of that.
Awesome. All right, a couple I attended, and I, I don't know if it was the same one as you, Mary, but I attended one on policies. It was called Effective Policy Development and Tips Toward Better Local Process. I think since Mary and Joe got into the initial process of switching us over to Neola, I think it's really streamlined quite a bit for us. So he just went through some of the policy decisions that you have to make as a board. That was actually run by Wisconsin Association, the school boards ran that one. And then I believe Maggie was at this other one, I'm trying to find it now. It was on AI and I want to see if I can find the actual title for it. Oh yeah, hold on one second, there it is. Empowering with AI, which stands for artificial intelligence, enhancing teaching and learning. And I found that session to be very practical, but it's not one that they had all the answers for. It's just we're at the beginning phase of this. I believe Wisconsin Association of School Boards even is going to have a resolution to start addressing the AI issues that school districts have. But Maggie, I'm going to maybe throw it to you for a second because you obviously are on the curriculum end of it. I can say as a teacher myself, I use AI, not only looking at my students using it, but as a teacher and educator, I'm able to use it to help me with my assessments and grading. But there's a fine line that can be crossed with that and you still need to take time as an educator. So I just, I didn't want to put you on the spot tonight, but you know, what in general? Like AI is such a new thing, so maybe share your perspective.
Yeah, so I think around AI, it's really an interesting time because it's moving faster than we're able to really fully understand the impact. So one of the things we've been looking at is ensuring that we're keeping kids safe, their data safe and also making sure that we're being responsible around implementing any AI technologies into our curricular repertoire. I think right now we're looking at piloting some teacher tools currently and then also looking at some possible instruction and education to students. We know that at this time that is, we aren't asking students to utilize AI as part of our curriculum, although they might be using it. So we want to help them navigate that and be able to look at the ethical complications and also some of the awesome power and productivity that can happen from AI. So it really is kind of a double edged sword. There's a lot of great, amazing things that AI can do. Earlier today, I said it was pretty rad how cool AI can be. But it also can be really scary and could have some big impacts politically, socially and just like, you know, social media was something that kids were playing on for a little bit. Now, you know, today we see the big impacts that it has on our students and mental health. So I think we just, as, as we're looking at policy development and implementation, we're trying to be careful and thoughtful about that for our students and our Greendale community.
Excellent. And Rachel, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you attended as well. And Jonathan, you were there obviously too. But Rachel, do you have anything to share?
Yeah, I'll just say that I really appreciated the opportunity to engage in this type of professional development, being able to sit in spaces with board members and hear some of the questions that they asked. It gave me another lens through which to just view the work that we engage in every day. I attended the session on the state of school finance and it was a really a broad stroke around the school funding model we have here in Wisconsin, some of the challenges that school districts are facing as a result of that and really just breaking down the need to ensure that we have adequate funding to provide high quality education for all of our students. So that was one of the sessions that I attended. And then Mary, I think you made a point of how long and lengthy that legal session was. They got through, I think, maybe a tenth of the slides. So they covered topics related to board members being able to drive school buses and just pretty much any legal development that's coming through the state. And I think that just highlighted how much law, regulation that we have to really understand and decipher as we work in school. So again, it was a great opportunity to engage in this professional development and just look at the landscape of education here in Wisconsin and all the things that impacted.
Thank you.
I think the nice part is you have a mixture of technical sessions that could be finance and operations related, but I actually enjoyed sitting in on a presentation from Montello, talking about their journey with literacy and their K eight programming and working with collaborative teams to be very reflective on their practice. And they found some significant changes they needed to make. But they emphasized a lot in that conversation, how you need to bring the team together to make impactful change in a quick amount of time where the team can rally around that, that change. So thinking about the change process. And it sounded like from a curricular lens, the implementation that they were moving to was similar to what we've done as a district. And I know that's been at the center of the work that Maggie and her team has been on is how can we bring along and support our teams in best practices for kids? So I thought that was very intriguing to hear that through a very different lens, very different part of the, the state. So I enjoyed that. I enjoyed presentation on some area districts on health insurance and innovative practices within health insurance. And I think we are at least keeping up with the pace from what I heard and engaging with our health benefit consultant on some of those ideas and making sure that we continue to stay cutting edge so we can keep as good of a plan as possible to attract and retain staff while also being within the budget allocation that we have.
Thank you, Jonathan. Dr. Midsick?
Um, I attended a session on the Marquette Public Poll. They've been giving the poll for about a decade. And so it was a valuable and insightful perspective on how public opinion has evolved over the last decade. And it looks to be that in the last five years, so since two thousand eighteen, that public satisfaction with their public schools and public support of funding the public schools has declined substantially around, over that time period. So by substantially, I mean there might, there was about a seventy percent satisfaction rating and in some spaces it has stayed around sixty-five percent, but in some spaces it has dropped to sixty percent or fifty-five percent. So that was enlightening because across the state of Wisconsin, we are seeing some of the things that we have felt over the pandemic, but that had really started in two thousand eighteen. So there was conversation, Alan Borsec from, who is an education writer, was part of that presentation and he really talked about how important it was that public schools continue to share their stories with the public, which makes sense from a journalist, that he would want us to share our stories, but that sharing our stories helps people to know what's happening in their public schools. So that was interesting, that was an interesting session.
That's neat. Did I get everyone?
I attended the, the referendum.
Okay.
As well as a meeting on student achievement and monitoring that.
Okay. Great. There, there were hundreds of sessions over that course of the time. I will mention too that it's the Wisconsin Association of Business Officials.
School Business Officials.
School Business Officials and also administrators. So it's really a conglomerate of leaders in education. So it's a really great networking opportunity. And I appreciate spending the time with all of you guys last week. So if there's nothing else, we will move on to Tasha with our legislative update.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. The Assembly is going to meet, there's a couple of bills they're going to look at. One relates to required civics instruction. Class for twenty-five, twenty-six school year boards are to annually report to the DPI regarding how they are meeting the civics requirement and who will be required for graduation beginning in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And then there was another bill that they were looking at with standards that require cursive writing. People must be able to write legibly in cursive by the end of fifth grade. And another one was, and I spoke about this last week, requiring school boards to make textbooks, curriculum and instructional materials available for review, which I believe we already do. That's it.
Maggie?
Yeah, I just want to. Around the civics, we are in review next year for social studies and we will be addressing, if that law comes to, to pass, we'll be addressing that. But we also are addressing civics because we think that is really important as, as our social studies for our students. So, and all of those things would already cover, including cursive is already part of the curriculum for CKLA as well. So all of those legislative updates, we are in a solid standing of where our curriculum sits and where our teachers are working towards in their curriculum review cycles.
So with the civics class, is that going to be a separate class? Or will that be just like with, embedded already within their social studies?
So they've, they've sent out a scope and sequence that is from K to twelve. And currently we are in the State of the Union, kind of looking at our current practice and making sure that we're aligning and seeing if there are gaps and where they exist. So that's where we're currently working on this year. And then next year we'll be able to take that vision and look at that information of where the different standards fall and if we need to possibly add a class or if we already have some of those already incorporated in different classes that are available for our students.
Most often taught in high school, a civics class and/or, or part of an American government course.
Interestingly, one of the questions in the Marquette Public Opinion Poll was who should be writing curriculum? And of the, those responding to the poll, only four percent said legislators should be setting curriculum.
I was just going to say, one of my questions with the civics, and I, I do believe it's very important as well. But as they add these mandates on districts, is there any funding that's coming with it? Or are they just assuming now we're going to absorb that as well?
That is something that people should think about and talk to their legislators about, the unfunded mandates. And also I just want to give a shout out to Ben Hubing, who was part of the civics K twelve teacher team for DPI. So we actually have a lot of in-house and Megan Farady as well, who's worked on the forward exam for social studies. So we have a deep knowledge base of civics and social studies in our own high schools. I just want to shout out Megan Farady and Ben Hubing for their amazing work for our students and the whole state.
Absolutely. And I, I think that it is important, you know, she's talking about the future, the legislative proposals, but personal finance was instituted this year. The policy committee will be looking at a personal finance policy to make sure that's embedded in the graduation requirements. And this board was, this board or a Greendale school board in the past was forward thinking and required an economics course for graduation. And currently personal finance, all of the personal finance standards have been in that economics course since inception. So we will, we have met that without any changes to our curriculum. We have been doing that for quite some time. So as much as teachers and educators and parents who provide feedback on the curriculum adoption process have supported what legislature is considering to be important at this time, so.
And that's why it's just important for us to stay focused with instruction based in standards because that is where all of this starts and ends for our students.
Maggie, just touching on, I think you said Megan and Ben both worked at the state level. I want to also commend them because I've served on the forward exam for social studies myself. That is a volunteer thing, so they are obviously going up and above the call to get involved at the state level and have some presence of Greendale there. So I want to thank both of them and thank you for sharing that with us.
Yeah, they're great educators, we're lucky to have them.
Quick question. How are the kids taking to cursive?
I think it depends on the kid you ask. I think, I think it's a, handwriting is really important and we know from brain. I think, I think it's a, handwriting is really important and we know from brain research that when we handwrite and it, there's connections that are made in our brain when we're writing and reading and reading and writing. And it's called encoding and decoding, so it does help us become better. And that's one of the reasons CKLA doesn't always, has us have the workbook so that kids can actually handwrite and make that connection. And especially in the younger grades, it's, it's really important.
What, what grade do we start at with that?
CKLA, we start in pre-K, so our four-year-olds.
Cursive? Are you talking cursive?
Cursive.
Cursive is, I think, I'll triple check, but I'm pretty sure it's second grade.
That's when I started, I was just curious. As a cursive writer, I...
As a cursive writer who loves cursive.
Yes, I was just, there's a lot of adults that can't read my handwriting, so I was just wondering.
It's like driving stick.
The law does say legibly.
Oh, it's very legible.
I wouldn't pass, so.
Good handwriting, I've seen it.
It's very legible.
My handwriting's pretty bad.
I hope that will make some of our retired teachers who have come and spoke before happy to know that this is coming back, so thank you for sharing that.
It's already back, you approved the curriculum.
Yes. All right, and now, anything else on legislative Board Committee updates? Any updates?
Policy next Monday and park and rec February 7.
And I believe the next Village Board meeting is February 6. And I am, in the interest of time, I'll let the accusation that I was campaigning at the table go.
Okay, guys, let's, let's, let's keep decorum, okay, please? I think, you know, just, we're on the end of the meeting, but one of the things I want to say, Cheryl was here tonight and I know she'd be willing for any of us to reach out for further, we, it's not a committee update, but it is just talking about our experience as a Board. We have a lot to offer and I think we also have a lot to learn from our administrative staff, so let's just continue to work together and try to, try to put our best foot forward. So, moving on to 5.7 is our Board Calendar Review tonight.
So, you, a quorum of you may be present at a number of events this week, including the Candidate Forum tomorrow. There is a Library Board meeting on Thursday. And I don't, oh, and on before our next Board meeting, January 31st, there is an operational referendum information session in the, at the high school that I shared in my communications that you may be present at.
And the location for that, there's three of them coming up, right?
All three are located in the cafeteria MPR of the high school.
Okay, great. Are we, we're posted for that?
All of those things are posted, yes.
Great. Any chance that that can get placed onto the Village marquee? Have anyone reached out to...
The library?
The operational referendum meetings?
Oh, we have not reached out to them, but we certainly can do so.
That might be helpful, just to publicize it a little bit. All right, we are at the end of our meeting, second set of additional comments. We've got some visitors that have stayed the whole time. Anybody want to come up and speak? Come on up. Good evening. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Sure, it's Courtney Crookshank Baronowski, in 6499 Redbird Lane. Just for clarification regarding the compensation structure for Greendale School District Support Staff, including paraprofessionals. According to the Support Staff Compensation Model that was presented on April 22nd, 2022 by Julie Groda first, and to my knowledge has not been updated. Julie stated, "Staff will be placed in the structure with consideration of how long they've been in the district and placement into the new schedule. This does not offer additional increases for new education or additional certifications." Currently, each step increases by 50 cents, which does not cover the cost of living ballpark if you have a base pay of 1,850. 4% I think is about 74, 75 cents. In the year 2022, 2023, Support Staff, including paraprofessionals, received a 4% increase with no additional steps given. So, thank you so much.
Thank you and thank you for sharing. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Okay, I'm seeing no additional comments. We are upon adjournment. Our next meeting is going to be February 5th at 7:00 PM. So, thank you everyone and have a great week and I hope our weather stays better than down south, right? So, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kathy.